I will call the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have roll call, please.
Congressman Waller.
Yes.
Salvi, Miller.
Yes.
Felixon.
Yes.
Mearkey.
Yes. Citizens comments, we have the West Central Initiative update.
It's hard to introduce you as being from West Central because she was always from the university, Jenna Bray.
I'm still getting used to it too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just to record again.
It records on the CD, it doesn't actually amplify.
Well, to the audience.
I just want to say thank you. I'm really appreciative of the opportunity to be here tonight, both as your neighbor and as one of your partners at West Central Initiative. I want to thank you profoundly for your support. You've been faithfully contributing to our organization since 1997. That's an investment not only in our future, but in the future of the gym and as somebody who lives here and as somebody who works for West Central Initiative. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
And your leader went to Germany, right?
She did. Well, that is on my notes.
Okay.
So I would get to, but yes, she did. So in the last year, we've made 29 grants to Morris projects. Those have totaled more than $169,000. We're working on the implementation phase of our comprehensive economic development strategy that is in your packets, the plan. There are also a number of focus groups for strategy planning happening on Zoom next week. There's information on our website if you're interested in attending, I would encourage you to do so. We also have the sort of ongoing work that we do managing community funds in the area as well as supporting our early childhood initiative. Diane Struble, of course, is the coordinator of students' county. She's doing really good work. Also want to thank Mearkey for your service to our committee board. Much appreciated. When it comes to specific Morris projects, you probably know that we worked on a state foster school plan with the city and the two schools here last year. That plan is finished. It's at the printer right now. Our copies will be coming to you as soon as they're finished. It'll be posted online shortly thereafter. And if you're interested in hearing from Wayne or Mallory, from our transportation team, they're happy to come present to you at that time. We also are continuing to distribute COVID relief funds through our revolving loan fund. There's information in your packets. If you know of anybody who might be a good fit, I would encourage you to reach out to them or reach out to us. Beyond that, I think the thing that's most exciting for us right now in terms of Morris is our ability to put our relationships and our partnerships now that I'm on staff. Blaine mentioned earlier that our president, Hannah Sessha, recently went on the Climate Smart Municipalities trip to Germany. She's very impressed with what's happening in both in Zierbeck and here in Morris. And we're really interested in sort of exploring that partnership. Flaine hosted a number of us from West Central Initiative in a little Q and A session with the Morris model team a couple of weeks ago, which was really eye opening for us. And then we also work with the university to help run a Fulbright scholar here, Mearkey, I don't know if you've met her yet, but she works in the early childhood education space. And we're really excited to have her and we're already looking ahead to some other international scholars we might be able to bring in and learn from and share what we're doing here. That's sort of all that I have. I'm happy to entertain questions, see if you have them now or want to get in touch later. But again, I'm just really appreciative of all that you do for West Central Initiative and hope that we can continue to deepen and strengthen our partnership moving forward.
Great. Are they still in the budget this year?
They are, yeah.
Okay, alright, good.
They're still, yeah. Well, you know, I've said it before, we get back so much more from them than what we put in. It's just one of those things and actually, you know, their leader was part of our group here, you know, so that some of us decided not to go and that was probably a good decision. But they all made it back, but she went along with the Morris group as one of the representatives there, you know, so that was good. So now we have more people that know what's going on with the Morris model.
Well, thank you, Jenna.
Thanks. Good seeing you.
Good seeing you again, Jenna. Take care.
Alright, okay. So, any other citizen comments? Okay, we have no public hearings, but we have reading and approval of minutes from September 14th.
I'll move approval of the minutes for regular meeting minutes for September 14th.
I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Carried. And the September 14th condensed version of the minutes.
I'll move approval of the condensed version of the minutes.
I will second that. Any discussion on any of that items, those items? That item? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. I will move approval of the consent agenda, which consists of the audit of city bills, the gambling report from the Eagles, application for exempt permit from Assumption Church and Ducks Unlimited, revenue expenditure report, and the April 20th planning commission minutes. And I moved approval on that.
I will second.
Any discussion or any questions or comments on any of the items?
I just have a question why we're hiring a couple different times here for stump grinding when we have our own stump grinder. We've got one for Craig Street Service for $450 and one for Jeremy Michelson for $226. But we purchased our own stump grinder. We're making payments on it. I'm just curious why we'd be hiring somebody to be doing our stump grinding when we have our own stump grinder.
I think they're bigger trees maybe.
Is that, is that just stump grinding or is that the label we put on it? Because I know, I know we're having some bigger trees taken out, you know, by Craig Byer and by Jeremy. You know, we had talked about that, you know, using Jeremy maybe with, I know there's some really big trees that had to come out. And I had talked to Brad at one time, the stump grinder works really, really well on the normal sized trees, but those great big ones, it doesn't necessarily work as well.
Well, it makes sense.
I think that's why, yes.
I saw some really big stumps on Jeremy's trailer the other day. I mean, they were, they were big. Wow. So I'm assuming that's what.
I think that's what it is. But that's a good question. I'll double check with Jim on that.
I just had a quick question that kind of jumped me as odd on the planning commission minutes. And it may just be something that he was late, but on the planning commission minutes, it says Commissioner Brands was absent. And then for reading and approval of minutes, he seconded the motion.
Oh.
I just thought, this is kind of odd, but maybe he came late or something.
Yeah, that could be. It's, it's been a while since we met.
Yeah, yes.
Usually they're pretty good about finding.
They just not, they just didn't meet during the summer. That's why we're getting that now?
Yeah, they don't, the planning commission won't meet on a regular basis unless something comes up, like they just met now because there's a variance request that they had to take action on. And otherwise, you know, there's not like standard stuff that they have to do.
Okay.
It's been pretty quiet.
It was like deja vu reading that, those minutes, because we've seen them before. So any other comments or questions on the consent agenda? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Carried. Ordinance is resolution, oh wait, before we even get to that, I will make a motion to add an item F. It was mail, emailed to you, a resolution accepting a proposal for precision concrete cutting. I'll second. Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Okay, so the first of the resolutions, a resolution approving state of Minnesota's joint powers agreement with the city on behalf of its attorney and police department.
Yeah, and these are just, actually, I was, didn't know what they were when they first came up because Aaron sent me his packet first and then Reggie sent me his packet. But apparently this is every five years that these are just agreements that we have to do with the state as it pertains to how our law enforcement and our attorney office interacts with the system. So they're just pretty much housekeeping. There's no, there's no fees or anything that go with it.
We will have a fee, it's a quarterly fee of $150. Previously it's been built into the county, but we'll be taking all that going on directly to the state.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so they're, they're just, you know, cleaning up their paperwork too.
So it's just renewing an agreement that we've had, correct?
Yeah, five years. Yeah, it's been five years. So it's, it didn't strike me as something I remembered. It's a long time to remember something.
I will move approval of a resolution for the state of Minnesota joint powers agreements with the city of Morse on behalf of the city attorney and the Morse police department.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on the first one? We'll have roll call vote, please.
Congressman Salvi, Waller.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Felixon.
Yes.
Mearkey.
Yes. And item B, we have a resolution, same thing, approving state of Minnesota joint powers with the city on behalf of its attorney, city attorney and police department.
I will move on that resolution, approving the state of Minnesota joint powers agreement with the city on behalf of its city attorney and police department.
I will second that. Any discussion?
What is the difference?
One's for the police department, one's for the attorney office.
It's some of the words inside.
It's, it's probably just.
I mean, okay, on the inside of this, because I'm looking at this point, they say the exact same thing.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
I thought they were the same when they came and that Reggie sent me a packet and Aaron sent me a packet and it's like, no, they're just two different things.
Okay, any further discussion? We'll have roll call vote, please.
Congressman Miller.
Yes.
Felixon.
Yes.
Waller.
Yes.
Salvi, Mearkey.
Yes. We have a resolution advertised for bids for the Yankee Ridge Road water main extension.
So this is a water line project that goes from Hartland, the last point on the line at Hartland and runs up to North Ridge Drive. It's going to go, the plan is to bring it right across North Ridge Drive, drop a fire hydrant in on the end, which, you know, would be available to service like going over towards Morse Coop and stuff like that. And then eventually that line could be extended. It's going to be eight inch, I believe, main line and on the Iowa Avenue side, coming in front of the experiment station there is an eight inch line. So eventually we could link up those two eight inch lines and then have a loop of water going through there to service that entire area. And then we'll, we will drop in connections for Jim Riley and Sons and for the county garage. And then ultimately, you know, I talked to Morse Coop about whether or not they're interested in hooking up and they have a well and septic system there. And, and they're not interested right now, but at some point in the future, they might be interested. So it's, it's a good way to get that line extended up so that eventually we can make that connection going across. And then the plan is to use the ARP funds. It's a little bit more expensive than the original estimate that we got, which was right around $150,000. But, you know, they're, they're narrowing down exactly what needs to be done. And realistically, you know, they're going to be doing a bid late in the fall. And so a company like Riley's that's looking for some late year work will be able to do it. And this is a water line project, so they do have the ability, depending on the weather in the fall, to be able to probably dig that in yet in October, November. I asked Jeff how late could they possibly work on this? And it just depends on the weather, you know, and if it gets really cold and there's, well, they can dig through frost, but it's a pressurized line, so it's not like sanitary sewer where you have to have gravity flow and all those kinds of things. So hopefully, you know, it'll get done by the end of the year. And if it can't be, then it'd be done in the spring right away.
This is just a water line.
It's just a water line.
Is there a sewer, sanitary sewer is there already?
Yeah, the sanitary sewer runs up the state highway line up to the county garage. So they, they are on sanitary sewer. Riley's is on sanitary sewer. And then ultimately you could probably run that up, you know, to even like Morse Coop because I think there's probably enough fall for that.
And we're going east, right, to along those homes on Ridge Road?
Uh, we're not, nope, we're not going, we're not turning the corner and going east. This is just to bring it up to the intersection.
But that would only be another quarter mile, half.
Yeah, so like I think, I think Dr. Williamson bought the house on the corner from Kirk Riley. And if he wanted to hook up, he could probably, probably run a line fairly easily over to his house and hook up. And, you know, going down farther, it's going to take a little bit more to get water down there.
Okay. But that's the eventual goal is to hook.
Yep, that's, yep.
Both. Is that a common, a common thing in, within infrastructure? I don't.
Ideally, if you have, yeah. Ideally, if you have a loop, it's a better system because it doesn't dead end and then the water flows through and keeps it.
Rust issues. You have less rust issues if you have a feed, so it doesn't dead end somewhere. If the, if the water line dead ends, you have a sediment buildup and rust will form. Or if it loops, it's, you don't want to be.
Get rid of some of that. You know, and when we updated our zoning map, you know, we, we, it's over there against the wall, but we put residential right there behind the highway, highway business. So that is a primary place that we could look at developing residential in the future if we need a place to go because you have sewer on both ends, you have water on both ends, and to make that connection is going to be really easy. It's a gravel road, so you don't have to dig up tar and stuff like that as opposed to, you know, the other area that we're talking about trying to get water and sewer out into. And I thi, I think, you know, that we talked about this, the ARP funds, even though there's a lot of cities that are using them for a lot of things that I don't know that they should be using them for, you know, it's kind of interesting how that works. But utilities, water, sewer, telecommunications are all acceptable uses of that ARP funding. So that's the best way for us to use it probably. Although a little bit later, we're probably going to talk before, just before the end of the year about possibly doing a couple, couple things like radios. There's some radio issues with law enforcement and actually in the budget that's presented, there's a portable generator for the sewer lift stations. They've all been wired so that we can bring a portable, portable generator to any one of them and hook it up and run them in case there's one that failed because of a power issue. So there's little things like that, but we have $560,000 to work with.
And has the county committed to water yet there at their location from this?
Yeah, they will.
This is going, right?
Yeah, there is, there's an issue that came up with regards to a sprinkler system. I don't know if you've been to their meetings, but with regards to a sprinkler system. But I, I talked to Rebecca this afternoon and I think they got that all worked out. And, and, you know, it's, the, the thing about it is, is this is our main water line going up there. So we really own it as a city. And then each, each connection, there's a connection fee that they'd have to hook up to pay when they hook up. And actually for the county shop, what we talked about, the normal hookup is like a one inch line to a house or a business. And this one's probably going to be a four inch line to facilitate the, the added water they need for their sprinkler system in the building. And that's all being planned as part of this.
And of course, that would all be metered and stuff, so.
Right. Yeah, they'd be a customer.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think that's all dialed in.
Okay.
Alright.
So then this would be, have a bid opening of October 19th at 11:30. Actually, the bids now are done electronically, so we don't meet in a room anymore and open up bids. Everything's done electronically and they have to have them in by the given time. And then the engineers will open them and look at them. So 11:30 on October 19th.
How far up Yankee Ridge Road it goes, just to the intersection?
To North Ridge Drive.
So it stops right there on that property? Okay.
Yep.
So Dan sales his, where he lives, it wouldn't go that far.
Wouldn't go by him, but he could, you know.
Be close to him.
He's only a quarter.
He could maybe run a line down there, but.
Okay.
I mean, that's the standard problem that you have when properties are, you know, 500, 600 feet apart, you know, it costs that much money to run a pipe.
Yeah.
But if you want, if you want water, I mean, there's, you know, bin requests for water as well as sewer.
Well, I think in that property, I'm sure he's on a well. And if something happens to his well, he'll probably weigh, well, should I hook up the city water or should I dig in the well?
Yeah, well, you know, he's got, of course, the canal there, so I suppose he does go through, you know, fill a lot of water too, but, you know, for his business too, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright.
I will move on the resolution authorizing advertising for bids for the Yankee Ridge Road water main extension project.
I will second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We'll have roll call vote, please.
Congressman Felixon?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Salvi? Waller?
Yes.
Mearkey.
Yes. And we have a resolution approving the preliminary tax levy for 2021 tax levy for collection in 2022.
Yeah, so as typical, I'm not going to go into detail on this, this budget because the, the next step for the council is to have a work session where we can sit down and talk about the details and then bring, bring that back for a discussion in front of the public in December. And that's part of these resolutions. But the, the tax levy, and I did provide just a, about a four page, I don't know if you guys got them on your table over there, but just a four page summary. And the, the reason I provided that to you and I didn't hook up my computers because the detail. Because I think there's, there's an important note.
Well, yeah. Oh, you have yours, okay.
So this, so this levy, as I indicated in the, the preliminary budget guidance to put together the budget, this levy is $1,721,615. It's seven percent more than the levy that we last had for 2020 going into this year. And, but one of the things I would note to you is that last year we froze our levy. So we had zero percent going into this year to, to work with. And, and we've talked about that before and we can talk about it in the work session and during the public meeting. But there's been several years that we've frozen our levy. And realistically, I think what's going to happen is when we get to December, we're probably going to be looking at around a three percent levy increase. But this just gives us a chance to take a look at some things and then make some final decisions before we go in, in, into the, the upcoming year. One, one of the things I would note to you is that this also includes an additional lease levy for a street sweeper. I think our street sweeper is 11 years old. I know when I was in Breckenridge for, for 17 years, we bought a new street sweeper every five years because they're the, they're the hardest working piece of equipment in public works. Because they're literally, you know, sweeping dust and dirt all the time. And, and typically there's a lot of maintenance that went into them and it just seemed better to keep them upgraded. This one's 11 years old and Brad, you know, always wants to fix something. But when he comes to you and says it's time to get rid of it, it's probably time to get rid of it. So, so this does include a levy of about $24,000 for a street sweeper.
Okay.
So.
That's, yeah, it's 24,000 for.
Sweeper.
For, it's actually 10 years.
Yeah, so it's about 250,000.
$195,000 is what it costs for a street sweeper nowadays. So you're talking, you know, interest on top of that. Interest rates are very good right now. But what I wanted to share with you, just on, on the levy side of it, is that we levy taxes. Taxes are then sent to the county and the county distributes that tax levy onto property based upon the value of the property. That's, that's how it's done. So there's a couple of things that I shared in this packet. One is that the market value for property in Morse went up three percent going into 2022. So you can see the two market values. We went from 200, 279,000 to about 287,000. Now, the one thing I would keep, have you keep in mind is that that market value could go up for two reasons. One, because there's new property, which we know there is, you know, there's, there's, we've been very fortunate. There's been a lot of construction that's taken place over the last few years. Houses, building them out too much, but you know, the hospital's done a lot of work. There's been other projects that, you know, are going on now. We know there's a new restaurant that's going to be coming in, some stuff like that. But market value and up. The other way market value can go up is just by the value of your property. So anybody that's had a piece of property and the value of it went up, that, that could raise your market value. And so I'd say that because it's important to understand, you know, just that dynamic. So market value went up, it went up about the same last year. So we've seen about a six percent increase in market value of property in Morse. Last year, we didn't raise taxes. So, so what happens then is based upon the market value and the type of property, the, the state has set, set tables for a commercial property, this much money. This is what the tax capacity of that property is. And they look at 100%. If you, if you charged 100% of the taxes on that property, it would be a certain amount. So if you go to the next page, what you're going to see is based on all those rates that are applied to that market value of property, 100% tax capacity would be $3,247,971. Tax capacity went up 3.8% over last year. And so that's, that's if you taxed 100% of that. So, you know, we've talked about this before, you know, what if we raised our taxes to pay for more things? Well, if we're taxing 100% of the tax capacity of property, our, our levy would be 3, 3,247,000. And we're talking about a levy of 1,721,000. And then the last page is the tax rate. So based upon the fact that we're levying seven percent more in levy, but the tax mark, the market, market value of property went up, the tax capacity went up, our tax rate on, on your property is actually going down. Now, that doesn't mean your taxes are going to go down because it, it depends on what the value of your property is. And I've, I've had people ask questions about that before. And, and we've talked about the fact that the, the actual taxes that Morse charges on property compared to what we spend is, is a very small amount. You know, it's, I guess I didn't calculate it, but it's like 18% of what we spend in the general fund and capital outlay fund comes from taxes. The majority of it comes from state and federal money that we get, local government aid, transit grants, all those, we get some other federal money for airports and things like that. So it's just important to understand that. Even though we're talking about seven percent increase in levy, it doesn't necessarily correlate to a seven percent increase in your taxes on your property. And, but I'm still thinking that based on what we're doing is, it's, you know, we're probably looking at about a three percent increase in taxes. And the one thing I would just say to you is that, you know, I was watching the news yesterday morning and they're talking about Minneapolis's levy. I think it was 6.8% increase and people are very upset about it. But then their argument was that the value of property had gone up, you know, just, just like I was saying to you. And there's cities that will actually do that. They will focus on the tax rate and not necessarily on the tax levy. And in some cases, their cities will look at if our value went up for the same rate, what can we raise our levy? So, so I'll just share that with you. So the, the resolution for the levy would be to. So, so I'll just share that with you. Um, so the, the, the resolution for the levy would be to raise the levy seven, seven percent, and there's actually a resolution in there that shows, you know, what the breakdown of that levy is. Um, based upon a accounting standards board, and, and I did note that there's one error in that levy uh, uh, resolution. Actually, the bottom line is right, but uh, there's a two thousand seventeen Geo bond. It should be seven hundred, or seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars instead of seven hundred and nineteen dollars. But that's, that's the tax levy, and uh, based upon an accounting standards board requirement, now we have to throw, we used to be able to split out our lease levies so you could see what it is. Uh, but in that general fund levy, there's actually a loader lease and the new sweeper lease as part of that levy. And so when we get into December, you know, what we'll do, that, that'll be the number that gets cut back, you know, when we go back down to a three percent levy.
And you said that was a ten-year lease on the sweeper, right?
Yep.
Okay.
By doing this, though, it caps our increase at seven percent. We can't go any higher than that. But we can lower it down to, to zero if we decide to do that, but that is the max.
That's the max that we can do.
Well, I think on the average, we, we average about a three percent levy every year, don't we? And of course, last year, we didn't have a.
Yep. Yeah, there's, there's one period that we had, because we got more local government aid, and there's one period, I think we had three levies in a row that were the same.
Yep.
You know, and sometimes people forget that, you know, because it's the last one that you, that they remember. And, you know, if, if anybody says, what in the world are you people thinking raising taxes, seven percent? You know, it's like, well, number one, the taxes you pay are only eighteen percent of our budget, and so it's, I always, what, if somebody calls me and asks me about it, I tell them, pull out your tax uh sheet and see what you pay for taxes for the city, because I think mine was like five hundred and sixty bucks for the year, or something like that. Oh, yours can't be much more.
I was gonna say, pay up.
Pay up, but, you know.
But then that's got to get broke down between county, city, and the school district.
Well, that's just for the city part, and then the school district has some, and the, the county has some in there. But it's like, I pay, I've said this before, I pay more for my phone bill than I do for city taxes. So three percent on top of that, it's not going to be a lot of money.
Yeah, I think you, in the past, you have, in your bud, in your budget uh, uh, presentation, you kind of wrote out an average cost per household and increase, and when you look at it that way, it's.
Yeah, it's.
Doesn't seem like quite a big of a bite, you know?
So I don't know, if you want to act on that levy resolution, then I can go into the budget resolution. We can talk just a little bit about what's all in there.
Okay, I will move the resolution approving the preliminary twenty twenty one tax levy for collection in twenty twenty-two. I will give that a second. Any further discussion? We'll have roll call vote, please.
Councilor Wallers?
Yes.
Salvi? Gullison?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Keys?
Yes. We have a resolution adopting the preliminary twenty twenty-two budget for the city of Morris.
And there's actually two budget numbers that I put in there. One is for the uh, general fund budget. So you're looking at a general fund budget that's about point eight percent more than last year, and, and, you know, tried, to try to explain, you know, how we can raise uh wages by two and a half percent and some other things, and still have a budget that's only point eight percent more. Uh, we can do that in a work session and get into more detail, but there's some key things in there that, that are reflected by that. One of them is uh, the federal government and state government are picking up more of the transit, because I think it's a hundred percent for next year, pretty much. And then the one thing that we have to watch out for is that any excess money we get through the transit system, through fares, things like that, at some point in the future, they may come back and ask us to, to, you know, give, put the money back in somewhere, and, and yet, at the same time, in this budget, what you're going to see is that we're doing a, a transit garage that requires about a two hundred thousand dollar local match. Uh, that'll come out of the capital outlay fund, and, and that would definitely offset that extra money that we get through the system. Because if you look at the actual budget for transit and what we're going to take in, in federal grants, state grants, and fares, we, we, it's more money than what the budget is. And that's fairly commonplace when they wind up having a bunch more money. And then the other budget is the overall budget for the city, which is, it's just, it's just a number, because there's so many pieces of it that go up and down, uh, that it's really hard to, to look at it and say, well, gee, why are you raising, you know, um, ra- raising it up at all? You know, it's a three per, seven percent increase, but then in some cases, there's things that are going up, uh, bonds, for instance, you know, we have a, a, other um, obligations that we have to pay, because the bond funds are in there, the uh, um, there's special revenue funds that are in there, there's capital outlay funds in there, and actually, you know, we're, we're budgeting a deficit spending in the capital outlay fund because of the things that are going on with, with uh, the transit and a couple of other things. So, so that doesn't really mean as much, you know, I think we've talked about that before, but um, you know, we'll, we'll flush all this stuff out uh before the, the final budget in, in uh, December, and then we'll present the detail on it, exactly what's happening. There is a, a budget um, summary report that's in there that shows, um, actually, it'll show that the general fund had a, had a um, point eight percent increase, but um, there's a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars still left on the table, and that's because we budgeted seven percent in levy. So if we go back to three percent, then I think it's, for every percent, it's about fifteen thousand dollars that will have to come off of that. You know, so we're talking about bringing four percent off of that. And at the same time, there's little ins and outs of all kinds of stuff, you know, we uh, we, we have a police force that's, you know, we, when you lose a more veteran officer and you hire a younger one, the, the numbers change. You know, and like I said about transit, there's more money in there for transit. So potentially, some of that hundred and seventeen thousand dollars could be excess transit money because of the, the uh, the uh, the state and federal grant money. Uh, but you can kind of see what we're doing with everything. Um, I think if I go to the, the actual, go back to the memo, and I'll just touch on a few things. The one thing we didn't know about, and right before I shut off my computer to come over here, I checked my emails again, and I got an email from our insurance carrier, and uh, our insurance update is going to be nine percent. We budgeted ten percent. I think last year, we budgeted ten percent, and it was like nine point eight percent or something like that. So I did find that number out uh before I came, so, so we don't have to add anything to the budget for health insurance. Um, let me just, LGA was about twelve thousand dollars more um, than what it was for uh the previous year, which is not a lot of money, and it really gets eaten up fast. This budget that I'm proposing has three percent increase in utilities. We've been kind of doing that. You know, one of the biggest problems that we wind up dealing with, and we can look at it closer before we get to December, is that when we got the funding for the, the uh, uh, water treatment plant, they put a requirement on us to fund depreciation, which governments don't do. And so we have to set aside, what was it, a hundred and twenty, about a hundred and twenty grand in cash to be reserved, restricted within the, the water utility fund for future replacement of a water plant. So over the course of thirty years, you can see how much money we're going to have to set aside.
That's per year?
It's per year. Yeah, so that was a requirement that came with the PFA funding, and, you know, they didn't talk about it ahead of time, but, um, and we still don't have a good, solid year of history in the water plant. Because last year, it was COVID, this year, it was drought, which actually, we probably had more, more sales in watering grass and things like that. Uh, the university came back uh to school, which was good. You know, so that's, that's going to make a big difference. The school came back into session, that'll make a big difference. So, so hopefully, everything will stay on an even keel, and we'll be able to watch that close to see what's going to happen. The other thing is that if you look in the capital outlay fund um, listing, and we can go through, let me just note a couple of things here on that. So in the capital outlay fund, we had two point three million dollars worth of requests. Uh, and actually, I'm recommending uh one point, about one point five, one point six million dollars in spending for right now. But a big part of that was the transit garage, so one of the notes that I make is that there are some things that are being asked for that come with revenue sources. Uh, the uh, hundred low lead fuel tank's going to need to be replaced at some point. Uh, and that's about four hundred thousand dollars to do that. Um, we can get a fifty-fifty grant from the state, so then I budgeted in that way, but I did not move it forward as, as something that we would do, because we don't have a grant to do it. But, you know, we have eight hundred thousand dollars worth of revenue that'll go against that million-dollar transit uh garage thing. And there's a couple of things in here that, you know, I'll talk to you about when we get into the work session. Tennis courts in Green River were a number one priority, but it's a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And are we going to spend a hundred and forty thousand dollars to replace a tennis court? Because that's a huge chunk of money when we have all kinds of other stuff. So it's actually not in my recommended budget right now. Um, fire truck, ladder truck, it's a million dollars. We're limited in the number of years that we can borrow money for a fire truck to ten. So if we do a ten-year um debt, uh, certificate, debt, bond issue, whatever it is, even though interest rates are good, you know, you're talking a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar levy just for one piece of equipment. And uh, I don't know how we ever afford to buy a new ladder truck. You know, and that's something that we can talk about, and, and uh, when we get into a work session, doesn't mean that. And the other thing is, we just bought one two years ago, just bought a truck two years ago, or a double truck is basically what it was. So there's some little things in there like that, but you'll see in that listing, there's a lot of little things that are, that are part of that capital outlay listing, and we can go through, and we can talk about all of them, try to figure out what it is that we want to do with that as we get into December, and um, let's see, um, I don't know if you have any specific questions about anything that was in the uh, in the uh, the memo that I, uh, workers' comp insurance was up. We knew that when the insurance um, people came and talked to us. The workforce, it remains pretty much the same, but for the preliminary budget, I left in a CSO, which seemed to work out pretty good during the summer, especially when we're uh, shorthanded in law enforcement, which seems to be all the time. Uh, but that's something that we can talk about. It's election year next year. Liquor store revenues, uh, we go back to the normal transfers from liquor stores, so um, they do have their profits that are available if we want to do something. Fire relief benefit, looks like they're doing okay with their funding, so we're, I'm recommending we raise that again. This has reclaim work in it. Uh, we have a resolution coming on the table to do some more sidewalk maintenance, and there's some in there for the future. One question I got from a resident on Seventh Street is, uh, are you going to budget money for our sewer project? And my response to the individual is, we do not budget money for sewer projects. Uh, capital improvement projects like that have to stand on their own. You know, so we don't take capital outlay money, we don't take pa- tax money, and specifically budget it to do those projects. You have to figure out how to fund them, and that, that one's going to take, you know, in the case of doing Yankee Ridge Road, you know, we had some ARP funding. The, the current project that we're getting ready to do a special assessment hearing on is probably going to eat up the rest of that ARP funding for the city's share of it. Uh, but, you know, that one's going to take a big chunk of money from probably the federal government. Or one of the things I would just mention to you is, I did have a couple of discussions with some people about the potential for doing a bonding bill to try to eliminate, because it's really an environmental kind of a problem, because people have wells and septic tanks in their ba- backyard. They're actually together in their backyards, I'm pretty sure. Uh, uh, but one of the things that I, I mentioned before that I'm going to recommend is that we actually do up some preliminary engineering, so we know what we're talking about when it comes to what if? What if we had to, you know, try to figure out a way to get water and sewer out to all these places in town that don't have city water and sewer, and then maybe do a bonding bill request? You know, because some cities have been successful doing that. You know, where we try to find a funding source, and that's actually what Jeff Kuhn's trying to do with federal funding, to try to get that water and sewer out to those various areas and get them off wells and septic tanks. So that, that is something that I'm going to look at doing. Um.
Well, you get back to this hundred and twenty thousand a year set aside. Um, will this be the first year we've had that?
Nope. I think last year, we had to do it.
Yep, it was uh, in uh, twenty twenty.
All right, and where do we pull that money out of?
The utility.
Just the utility.
From ratepayers. You know, that's where, that's where it comes from, and, you know, at the end of the year, wh- when we get audited, what you'll actually see is depreciation will be calculated. You know, so, so you have to show what it would look like, but then we don't actually take money and then put it into a reserve. You know, and I don't know how many businesses actually do that. You know, they calculate it for tax purposes. We don't pay taxes. But in this case, you know, we, we have to make sure that the bottom line looks okay on that, and uh, I mean, it's just, you know, we know that there's costs that do go up, you know, with labor and things like that. But yeah, that's where it comes from, is ratepayers.
What's our rate right now on the utility fund? I'm trying to remember that.
I'd have to go back and double check that.
If you had it, I guess, it doesn't really matter, I just was curious.
Yeah. There is a playground set that's in here. We talked about doing playground sets each year, and, and uh, what else? There is no specific request for increasing con- contributions to things like uh, SEIC or community ed or the building inspector's contract. So, um, there is a listing of long-range um, capital projects that's in here. You know, we're doing Columbia Avenue and East Sixth Street and Iowa Avenue next year. And then it's a matter of trying to figure out where we go next, but there is a standard set of things that we wind up doing. Seal coating, crack filling, mud jacking, uh, reclaims. Um, you know, there's some other things that are coming up. Looks like all the airport stuff is fairly covered moving forward.
Beyond twenty twenty-two, it looks like that's to be announced, so we're.
Yep.
You're doing that intentionally, I imagine, just to keep our options open.
Right.
How much.
Yeah, because we've, we've been doing really good trying to keep up with reclaims and getting road surfaces taken care of and stuff like that, and, you know, we went to East Sixth Street and Columbia Avenue and Iowa Avenue just because we've seen issues with either the road surface or, you know, Columbia Avenue, we've had water breaks along there that we've had to fix, and so it'll be good to get that taken care of. The last thing I'll, I'll say, and then I'll just answer your questions, but I've been watching really close what's happening on a federal level, you know. I said this morning, I'm kind of a political science nerd, so I like to, I like to watch that kind of stuff, and it looks like they're probably going to pass the federal infrastructure bill. I think Thursday, they're scheduling a vote on that, and that's roads, bridges, all kinds of, you know, the, the, the hard infrastructure kind of things, and, and uh, whether or not there's going to be money that's going to trickle down to the state and then to cities, counties. and then to cities, counties, townships uh is yet to be seen, but it's a lot of money and, you know, we've actually seen money trickle down to us for various things. And then it looks like if everything works out right, they're gonna have the social infrastructure bill uh probably next week if it works out. Uh that'll get passed and I don't know if we know all the stuff that's in there, cause they're talking about everything from you know, daycares to um, you know, um schools, all all kinds of stuff, you know, to try to take care of those kind of things and whether or not we'll see some of that come through, but um to be ready in case something does come through is is really where we wanna be and I think we're probably sitting in pretty good shape. You know, if there happens to be another chunk of federal money that's gonna come through like we saw on Oregon Avenue, we wanna be ready to try to jump in onto a grant project. Especially for Seventh Street to get that one, you know, taken care of to the point where we can start getting water and sewer out to where it needs to go. I did have a uh resident from Park, Parkview Heights over by Pomneter Park, cause they're on water wells and septic tanks and there's actually water right next to them and sewer right next to them. Uh but you know, for people to actually get it to their property would take take an assessment or take some money and whether or not we can find some 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 grants to be able to do that, cause the idea, you know, is really we shouldn't have any properties on wells and septic tanks in town. And so if we can find a way to find some funding to eliminate that, it's gonna be good for everybody. So that's one of the things I'm focusing on. So we'll just leave it at that if you get questions. And then I think in the resolution, we talked uh about setting the public discussion for December.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, which is our normal meeting date at six o'clock. And then we'll set a work session in October if that works out for you.
Okay, so we have the resolution for the budget for twenty twenty two.
I will move on that resolution adopting the preliminary twenty twenty two budget for the City of Morris.
I will second.
Okay, any further discussion? We'll have roll call vote, please.
Comes from Resalvi, Wallers.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Delikson.
Yes.
Mary Gies.
Yes. We have the added resolution accepting a proposal from Precision Concrete Cutting.
Yeah, so what I did was I went back to him and I said, let's talk about the next group of roads and and this is all based upon the original survey that was done by W S N on all the sidewalks in town. And so we, you know, we did California and Seventh Street and Columbia Avenue and and South Street. They're already plugged in, West Fifth Street's plugged in. Uh so then we just moved on to the next level. We got East A Street. We got Ridge Road, um Meadow Meadow Lane, that area, and then First Street, Second Street, Third Street. So the goal is to get all those sidewalks done and then next year we budgeted in another fifty grand to do a project. It actually works out very well with Matt Freeland, who's their representative. He kind of knows and understands what our budget is and he'll go out and he'll look at them and I mean, you can see on in this packet, there's a lot of, a lot of little nicks and cracks and and stuff like that, cause I think it was like eight hundred and three tripping hazards that he identified in this project area number two is what we're calling it. And uh, you know, it's forty nine thousand dollars and he thinks he can get it all done yet this year. The one nice thing about that, that system is that as long as there's no frost in the ground, those guys can work and work and work and they seem to go fairly quick. You know, it's amazing how far they get in a day and I think he had three crews working just recently on on the roads. So my recommendation is that we authorize them to go ahead and do these and then next year, what we'll do is we'll have him come in and he'll he'll start looking at probably what's left here and then we'll go over on the west side and start doing those. And and the one thing I would tell you is I've had zero people call me and complain about anything that's going on with it. He he said there's, there's people will come up and talk to them and just check with them and see what they're doing and there's a few people that have contacted him about, you know, getting some other things done on their property and they're more than willing to do that.
Why don't we go and address the 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 sections of sidewalk like in particular along Seventh Street by uh where
The dips.
There that are all, it's all broken apart. I mean, that I they can, they might, they 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 shave that to a degree, but there's
Right.
Significant cracks and broken pieces, sections of sidewalk. So when are we gonna address those types of issues? Do you have any idea, Blaine?
Nah, not yet, but you know, realistically, the s- the stuff that's fairly flat is 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 good, but so we're gonna do mud jacking on the dips, cause there are dips. And then we're gonna be doing the city, I say we, um that's part of mud jacking. We're gonna be doing where the trees have pushed up the sidewalks, because that's our responsibility, cause there are trees. But uh to identify the sidewalks that need to be replaced, that's gonna probably have to be a homeowner responsibility and
That section though is ours, right? That that runs from like where the the uh vault, what is that?
Oh yeah, on Seventh Street.
Monument there, all the way up to like the laundromat.
Yep.
There's several sections in there where the sidewalks are just, they're falling apart.
Yeah.
And I just wondered when we were gonna address that. I mean, I I'm happy with the shaving part, but those parts are equally bad.
See, and there's state aid roads. The Seventh Street's a state aid road, so there's maybe money to be able to do that. And actually, you you know, Jen mentioned safe routes to school, you know, and that's part of what we're gonna be looking at is any kind of infrastructure requirements, you know, where we can apply for grants to help shore up, you know, sidewalks and bike paths and and things like that. So yeah, that's that's the next thing is what do we do with that?
And that's all been identified on that sidewalk plan?
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
Everything, okay.
Okay.
Yep.
So it's all there. I mean, it's laid out, we just have to
Yeah, we just have to, yeah, we just, this this seems like it's gonna be a good process moving forward. Now we have to focus on on the next process.
Like I said, we got, we have a big plan and now we just take section by section, so I will move on that resolution accepting a proposal from Precision Concrete Cutting for Project Area Number Two Sidewalk Maintenance.
I will second. Any further discussion? We'll have roll call vote on that resolution, please.
Comes from Miller.
Yes.
Delikson.
Yes.
Wallers.
Yes.
Salvi, Mary Gies.
Yes. City Manager's Newsletter.
Um, let me just look here. Well, Chris left. I don't know if you guys were aware of that.
I was not.
That he was
Surprise.
He he uh, well, that's what happens.
They recruit him in Germany or when he was in Germany or what?
No, they recruited him before Germany.
Oh.
Is what, is what, is what happens, but uh um actually it was funny, cause I got a call from him uh Monday morning, yesterday morning and it's like, hey, the first job I have is I have ask you about a water project that Department of Commerce is working with. So they they asked him to talk to the City of Morris, but um
Did you hang up?
Yeah, I told him.
Not interested, sorry.
Go fly, okay. But uh uh just a couple of things I would touch on. One is it's not on here, but uh did get a email from Dan at the the uh bus garage that uh the two electric school buses are coming in this week. And then they're gonna do some train up on them and and so probably in the next week or two, we'll see lion electric school buses uh running around more, so so I'm hoping that, you know, there'd be an opportunity to to get involved with that, you know, a little bit since we're we got to see him when they demonstrated them and 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 it's just gonna be cool. Our transit bus, we're still waiting on the grant for that. I think there's, you know, it's a state of Minnesota grant from the federal government. You know, they applied on our behalf and so we're still kind of waiting on that. Um two other things I would mention is that I was contacted by the Department of Vehicle Services about a uh motor vehicle testing center and they wanna, they they're trying, they wanna get back out and start putting them back into communities, cause during COVID, there was very limited access for people to go take their driver's tests and stuff like that, so we're looking at the Senior Citizen Center. I mean, it's a good service for the community and and uh so I'm working on a lease with them on bringing them in. They only come into a town a couple, couple days a month to do testing, but you know, it it is important. They they'll do the the road tests and the driver's tests.
Do the senior citizens, is there still a group?
No.
Does that, do they uh, okay, if there's not a group, then they don't use this facility?
No.
We should rename it.
Well, yeah, you know, I thought about
Really should.
I thought about, you know, maybe, you know, just be in the community center, but yeah, there's something
I like community.
I think we took, did we take the sign off? I know we're missing a couple of letters.
It's always kind of been senior citizens slash community center.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll, yeah, I I think we can take a look at that and and uh and then the other thing is that solar well, I guess I got a couple of notes here, but solar, um we're just getting ready to uh the the next step is to uh have have what what they call a witness. There's gotta be a witness to witness the system. And then they put the meter in and then, you know, get it ready, but then I think what we'll do is have a little ceremony probably outside of the liquor store, maybe this building, cause these two are gonna be ready now. And that's a, that's what I said, we can get some, pop some champagne or something, but um uh they're they're just about ready to go and then we'll start making making uh electricity. Actually, the the weirdest thing for the budget was I had to go back to Chris and double check, but the two solar systems on these buildings are linked into the same spot. They come off the building and they go into the same spot. So they had to do a study just to make sure it was okay to bring both these power systems into the same connection area going back into the system, but but I said, something doesn't look right, because we're making more energy than we're using in these two buildings and he goes, yeah, exactly. So actually, there's a negative number that's uh budgeted for electricity in city buildings. It's like five thousand dollars, cause we're gonna make more energy than we use
Just on these two buildings.
On these two buildings.
But the liquor store.
Liquor store uses a lot of electricity.
Opposite way yet, so.
So we're good there. Um Professor Vedder's coming Sunday and Monday. And so they're probably gonna have a little deal Sunday night out at the university or Old Number One or somewhere uh to get together with him and then we're planning all kinds of things that he's gonna do with uh university students and the research center and stuff like that. He's, he wants to be in Morris. He's actually the only one coming from Germany right now and he got approval to come in. So that's just a note. You might get an email from us.
Send an email, please.
Yep.
On our, I guess me personally on my, instead of and then check mine.
Non-city email?
Preferably, if you will, please.
We can do that. And then the last thing is, it looks like we're gonna get our L C C M R grant for the updated one to hire a new Chris to
Good.
Well, we can hire one now, but then the funding runs out, but then then the next funding, it looks like it's all but locked in. They had I sat in on the meeting and watched it and it's kind of a weird committee, but um they sent out an email today with a spreadsheet based upon what they actually did vote to approve. And we requested a hundred and seventy thousand dollars and there's a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in the proposal that got approved. So now it goes to the legislature next um February and then they'll vote on it and once that's done, then we'll get that grant.
Cool.
So that's it. Lot of stuff.
Blaine, on the solar uh buildings, what did we say the payoff was on that again? I had ten years in my
It's about nine, ten years, depending on the building. Library was a little bit more, just cause we didn't get quite as many credits as the other buildings, but it's about nine, ten years. I I figured ten when I was doing budgeting.
Kind of what I thought. Somebody asked me and I said ten years, so I had a better check.
Yeah, in the life of it, it's like twenty five to thirty years, so.
Okay.
Great. Any uh any questions on a city manager or? Anything else to bring before the council?
Uh just one quick question. Is there a target date for shutting off the water at the parks?
Uh October first.
I don't, would they find out today? Is it Friday they're gonna shut it off?
They're gonna start Friday, yeah, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
That's pretty quick.
Yeah, it's coming up quick.
Well, ironically, the park is, it's a park full. Would they have three calls today? It's so nice out that people and there's hunters, you know, that come to town, stuff like that, but it takes them a while to get everything flushed out and uh in the bathrooms and the natural water line has to be flushed out.
Yeah, you can almost prepare yourself for that question. Why is the water off? It's so nice.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, yeah, it's gonna be for a while. Um be sure to change my email address from my work address. Cause I will no longer be there after Friday.
What?
Congratulations.
Retired.
Uh getting rid of me. No, yeah, retired, retired. Beg pardon for uh not that day. Congratulations.
That's good for you.
So actually, my new email address would be the same uh prefix, but it'd be at Gmail. So anything you see with W C E C, take it, change it to Gmail.
Alright.
Okay, any other thing, anything else to come before the council? Alright, meeting adjourned.